Welcome, everybody, to the June 8th Town Council informational work session. I'll read, let the record read that the entire council and mayor are present. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
For the United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic.
What is it?
One nation.
Under God.
The God of God.
Liberty.
You got us all. All right. Amen. All right. Okay. Okay, we're going to begin. We have one topic on the agenda, the FY20 and FY21 COVID fiscal impacts. Before I begin, I want to thank Holly and Dale for this proposal that they put together, somebody mentioned earlier. Holly had the lead on this, and I think is responsible for the PowerPoints and all that version. Dale, of course, you provide a lot of input, and we, they worked together as a team for you guys, a lot of hours to get this together, so I really do applaud their work. I'd be remiss if I didn't applaud the town council as well, because prudent planning comes in handy when you have a situation like this. So you guys have done a great job since you've been elected, and it shows. So I'm going to begin this. I'm going to read a message, our message, I'm going to let Holly give the overview that she drafted, and then we're going to get into the budgets, and I'm going to ask the council to, you know, provide their questions if they can for each budget here. So I'll begin with the message that we want to share with everybody, is it basically, there's no increase in taxes, and the main tax reduction that we passed is going to stay into effect. No decrease in resident services. We minimize the health impacts for our citizens through public amenities. No staff furloughs or layoffs. Minimal impacts to reserves. We prepare for 18 to 24 months of revenue impacts. We are going to maintain our debt reduction plans. And next slide. And to reiterate again, no increase in taxes, no decrease in residents, citizens, reduced health impacts. Adjustments reflect zero staff furloughs or layoffs, zero reserve transfers. Prepare for extended impacts if necessary, and we certainly intend to maintain the payoff of the 2010 utility fund loan, saving the town $308,000 in interest. So I'll give you the ball now, Holly.
Great. Thank you. So we wanted to just show the town council and public our, kind of a summary of our sources of revenue from our general fund. So approximately 80% of our income, close to, is coming from our real estate taxes, admission and amusement, and our state income taxes. So we have a large impact projected in state income taxes, and obviously, admission and amusement revenue, mostly for the fiscal year of '21. So this is just an outline in terms of where the funding is coming from. We broke down a, kind of a summary, high-level summary, for each fund by fiscal year, and we did this based on a cash flow projection, as well as looking at the budget on a zero-based budget line item for each fiscal year. So starting with fiscal year '20, we do have a projected surplus of $704,000 in revenue for fiscal year '20. We also have a projected decrease in expenses by $878,000. So we went through the general fund budget, and we took a look at, for the remaining year, any expense that would be considered nonessential or could wait, and we eliminated that so that we could have an ending balance that would be helpful for the town in the future for planning for COVID impacts. In light of that, for fiscal year '20, when looking at the actuals in terms of where we're projected to land at the end of the fiscal year, we do look like we're going to come out at a surplus of $1.583 million by the end of the fiscal year. And that surplus is going to help us with our cash flow opening balance for fiscal year '21. So we're projecting a $454,000 opening balance for fiscal year '21, which we've used in our cash flow projections for the year. Fiscal year '21, we do have a projected revenue loss in the general fund of $1.314 million. So we've taken that loss, and we've gone through each line item in the same way that we looked at fiscal year '20, and we've decreased expenses as much as possible to offset that expected loss. So we've totaled up over $1 million in decreased expenses. In terms of the utility fund for fiscal year '20, we are projecting a decrease in revenue at this point through actuals and about $136,000. We do have some decreases in expenses in that fund as well, totaling $144,000, with an overall surplus projected of $8,000 into fiscal year '20. For fiscal year '21, we are going to have a strong opening cash balance of $794,000. For our water park fund, we followed the same practice. We looked at fiscal year '20, and we did project a loss of revenue of $374,000, and the main factor in that is that we are not expecting any revenue prior to June 30th of this year. For fiscal year '20, we did as well go through that budget with Maryland, and went through line by line and reduced expenses totaling $316,000. And a lot of that has to do with the park not expected to be open before June 30th, the decrease in staff coverage. For fiscal year '21, we took a look at three different projections, or scenarios, and these are based off of a cash basis or cash flow scenario, not necessarily a budget, a zero-based budget line item. So scenario one, we looked at was a July 15th opening of the water park, and we have a projected $103,000 surplus. Scenario two would be an August 1st opening, which we're showing $164,000 loss. Scenario three, we considered what would happen if the park wasn't able to open at all, and we have the largest loss expected under that scenario. In terms of the water reclamation plant fund, for fiscal year '20, we have a projected loss of revenue of $197,000. For fiscal year '20, we've also reduced expenses totaling $83,000. Our partner payments are current, and for fiscal year '21, we don't have any projected Our funds that we do not see any impacts are our mitigation fund and our rainy day And this is just a high-level view of each fiscal year. It basically provides a list of each of our funds, the projected surplus, loss in revenue, your losses in red, your projected surplus of deficit in expenses. So this line item here is where we went in and decreased expenses to offset our loss. We have a revised projected ending fund balance, and that's on a cash basis, and that is what we use for our cash flow. And then we have a reserve fund balance listing, and that, none of the reserve funds have been impacted.
Question on this slide?
Yes.
Can I go?
Go.
Okay. Question on the columns on this, take the first one, projected surplus, loss, and revenue. Those items do not total to the total shown on the bottom. It's off by just under $2,000.
Okay. It might be a rounding.
That's fine. And then on the projected surplus in expenses, when you sum the columns, when I add them up, you get $1,420,000, the difference being exactly the amount shown as the WRTP item. Is that not included in the total for a reason?
We can take a look at that.
Thank you. And the same.
You are right. I'm just looking at the calculation, and it's correct. It does not include the treatment plant. We can correct that.
Okay. And it's the same for the projected ending balance column. Thank you. That's it?
Yeah. It's good.
Are you wanting questions as you go, or are you preferring questions at the end?
Actually, what I want to do is get into the actual budget. So say we do general fund FY20, present it, and then take questions.
Good. Thank you.
That's coming right up. Thanks. Go ahead, Holly.
Okay. So this is also a snapshot of fiscal year '21 as well, and this is the same, we have our projected surplus and loss of revenue per fund, our decrease in expenses, proposed decrease in expenses, and our ending fund balance. Also, our reserve balances for each fund is not impacted. Okay. We move on to the budget. Let me see if I can get this. Okay. So we'll start with the general fund fiscal year '20. Mayor, did you?
We just want to take questions at this. Hey, Holly?
Yes, however you want to handle this. This is the general fund fiscal year '20, if we want to start there.
Yeah, we've gone through this many times, and the council has obviously looked at it, so let's just take questions. I'll start with Valerie and work away our normal seating order. So the entire, for Valerie, for FY20, general fund, you have anything?
Yes. I have a question on the tax first. What was our last payment? County, we get paid quarterly with that, right?
Yeah.
How much was the last payment, and what date did it come in? What period did it refer?
Sure. Dale, do you want to take some questions?
Sure. Valerie, are you talking about admission and amusement?
Yes, I am.
Yes. The last payment came in July, and what it would have been for is the prior, excuse me, came in June, and it was for the prior three months. So April, May, June, and then we got the payment in July, and it was about $430,000.
And what do we get last year for the same period of time?
Yeah. The amounts have been very similar quarter over quarter, within a couple of percentage points. We had a tiny bit of an impact on this last payment we got, it was about $30,000 less than we got the prior year for that quarter.
Then when do you expect the largest impact to occur? In the next, for admission and amusement quarter?
In the next, yeah. When we get our, when we get our next payment, that will be the impact of the prior three months.
Okay, that was my first question. And then the hotel tax, that would be obvious. I mean, they're closed, so the quarter over quarter would be down, I assume. The last, you get the whole time at the same exact time? Did you get the?
And Valerie, if I could, let me just clarify. I was mixing it up a little bit. The last payment we received was actually, and I'm looking at our accounting software right now, was actually in April, and that was for January, February, and March. So it was down a little bit, because that's when COVID-19 really picked up at the end of March. And then the next payment that we will receive will be in July, and that will be for April, May, and June. So that's the one that's really going to be impacted, the first payment for the first, for the beginning of fiscal year '21.
Would it be okay if you, when you get that next payment for those two items, the admissions and amusement, the hotel, if you could, like, let us know? Because that'll really show where the impact is, I think.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And that's along with the highway user revenues? That shows an immediate effect. It's already down 33%. So basically, I find it hard to believe we're going to get much in the way of.
We actually, we just received some good news on that line item. Over the weekend, I got from the Maryland Department of Transportation that they said what we're expecting for fiscal year '20 will be about 40,000 less, so that number will be more around 304, 305. And fiscal year '21, they're saying it's only going to be 40,000 less. So when you get to that slide, I think it's like 363 is what we were originally supposed to get. They're saying 323.
Yeah, but Public Works and Holly and the administration have done a great job on having a priority list of roads to pave and take care of. And so although it's an impact, hopefully it won't be felt by the citizens as much as it could have been.
Right.
Because, you know, I know you guys have the priority list of places that you pave and such, and that's a really great idea, and it'll help minimize that. If I read the numbers correct, I wrote them down, if I understand this, please correct me. So for fiscal year '20, we're going to have a surplus of 1.5 billion.
Well, yeah, we're estimating 1.5 to 1.6. Yes.
And fiscal '21, we're going to have a loss of 1.3, right?
That's what we're estimating, correct.
Understood. I totally respect the fact that this is all estimated, dude. It's all good. I mean, it's all hoping for the best and planning for the worst. So just by looking at those two numbers, we'll be lucky to break even, and with the situation as it has been, I think that's about as good as we could have hoped for. Is there any?
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree, yes.
Is there any expectation, and this might be more of a Holly or Pat question, or maybe you, Dale, of any placement funds coming in from the state or the fed through grants or whatever? For lost municipal revenues?
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to take that, or?
I don't have an answer for that. Do you have an answer for that?
Well, the one thing I would say, not so much a grant, we are still pursuing some COVID-19 reimbursement between the county and the health department, and we're hoping that's going to help offset some of the additional expenses we had for fiscal year '20.
And if I could just add to that, that there's really, there's not a grant for loss in revenue available to the town. It's just tied to COVID expenses, expenses that were not budgeted that we have incurred due to this crisis.
Although not appropriate for this time, I wonder if the water park would fall under that, and I know it's not, we're not in the water park, and I respect that. I wonder, so we can kind of hold that question, maybe for the water park. And then, so my understanding for the general fund, and any of the other funds, we're not taking out any money from the rainy day fund, is that correct?
Correct. No impact of rainy day.
We're in balance in the rainy day fund.
The balance is about 2.5 million.
Awesome. It's nice to have that matched up if ever needed.
Yeah, the balance is on that summary sheet.
2.533. Yep. They're all the way to the right.
I got it. Thank you. And I may have questions, Pat, once you go around again, if that's okay, on this one.
Okay.
That's one of my largest ones. My last question, we have any, there's going to be no impact on our police services, right? I mean, we're not changing that.
I didn't catch the word. I heard services.
Policing. We're not changing.
Oh.
What was the word? I can't hear the word either.
It was a police, Valerie?
Yes.
Yeah.
No impact.
No impact, yes.
Awesome. All right, I think that's all I have for this budget, and I'm really happy to hear that we're still paying off that debt. I think that $300,000 in saved interest is wonderful, and I may have more questions afterwards, when I hear the other guys, okay? Thanks.
Okay, Charlie?
Well, first, I wanted, so I guess echo, I mean, this is remarkable, not just the amount of work you guys did, but the fact that you've made the numbers work the way that you have. My question is around the water park, but some other things, I think the gambling and amusement revenue as well. You, I know they're estimates, but just enlighten me a little bit about how you made the estimates, and how you considered the idea, not just that things might open late, but that things might be opened on a limited, a limited basis, right? So I could imagine that the water park would open July 15th, which I actually would have, a month ago, would have told you it wasn't going to happen, but I could imagine that it will not be open to full capacity with full concession sales, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm just, you know, I'm not looking for you to say, this is the mathematical model we use, but are those things considered, thinking about the amusement revenue and the water park and things that could be impacted by a percentage?
Well, I can handle this one. Charlie, we're going to talk about the water park when we get to the water park budget. So, and in terms of the admission and amusement tax, this fiscal year was easy, but when we get to the next FY21, I'll tell you what the thought process was to get to those numbers for that, but we'll do that after this budget.
Okay.
I'll answer both those questions. Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Larry?
Yeah, just to clarify, what we're talking about here is the wind-up of the FY20 budget, which is, we've got three weeks to go.
Right.
So that's, that's the projections we're looking at here. My questions for you, Holly, if you scroll down a little bit further into the expenses, other charges, the good news is, since these are expensive, negative numbers are good things, but some of them are pretty significant, and I don't want to go into any of the details, some of them are obvious, like the education travel, while we didn't go a whole lot of places this year, but the one that jumped out at me was the town hall, wait a minute, we wrote it down here, software agreement, town hall building maintenance, 81% reduction. What, what did, yeah, how did we defer? What did we defer on that one?
You're, I'm sorry, you said town hall maintenance?
Town hall building maintenance, item 622500, under the contracted services.
Yeah, right there, Holly. Forty thousand dollar budget.
So we had budgeted some funds to look at the HVAC this year, however, we are going to be looking at that next year, so.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
There's no main project eliminated.
Yeah. No, but really, it's good news to see all these negative numbers under expenses, so thank you very much. That's all I have on this item.
Okay. Greg?
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. I just, I have a general comment, just kind of apply to the successive things we're going to review. Folks at Town Hall know what they have to have and what they'd like to have, and I trust the judgment there. When I, at first blush, when I reviewed all the paperwork here, and we're talking, we'll talk about the general fund budget, of course, and I was really comfortable with the work that you all put in, and what was coming out at the end there. I think we're in really good hands there. I'm not overly concerned about really any of this stuff in particular. I just would like to share my sentiment that I know there's things that we've actually got to have, and things that we'd like to have, and I don't know if we're in a position where we have to cut all of the things that we'd like to have. So that's really my only comment. I don't have any general comments specifically about this sheet. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So just a couple of questions. Well, first, again, great work. Thank you very much. This is very helpful to see all this, and you guys did an immense amount of planning, and it's wonderful to see. Couple of minor questions here. The state DNR critical area grant that said $4,000, we didn't receive that, or?
We will, Keith. We generally get it in June, and so we should be getting it shortly.
Okay. Okay. I was just curious why, why there was a blank there.
Yeah. I mean, they recently lowered our expectations, it's going to be $1,900, but to your point, we could have $1,900 in there.
All right. And then, along a similar vein of questions that Larry was asking, I had just noted the annual software agreement, a big drop there, and that's great. I was just curious if you could share a little more information about that?
I believe the major impact with the annual software agreement is that we have not finalized one of the pieces of software that we've been working on rolling out, so that is the impact there.
Okay. Okay. And then the other question I had about this was the insurance item, the second to the last item, and I was just kind of curious how we were able to get savings there. Is that because some, because the events have been canceled, and we don't need additional insurance, or how does that work?
So we went through and itemized out all of the covered or scheduled items on our insurance policy, and actually, we're able to reallocate those expenses to other budgets. The main impact was the treatment plant. We went through and reviewed that more thoroughly, and were able to move some expenses out of the general fund.
Okay. But we're still covered in terms of the insurance we need and all that kind of good stuff?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. All the questions I have.
Derek?
Thank you. Yes, in a general sense, I want to echo what's been said. I mean, this is a really great product, and certainly at the macro level, you know, all these numbers look very promising. But going back to the budget, I just wanted to clarify one thing before, which was on, what Valerie had asked about the admission and amusement tax. So on this page, it looks like, even though we haven't received the fourth quarter, which we're expecting to be substantially, we're still over budget. Is that a correct statement?
It, well, you know, let me see, Dale, I mean, you and I went through this a couple of times to be sure, you were trying to be sure that I understood everything, okay, as it is now. So I think it's safe to say right now that for FY20, we have received all four checks. Is that correct, Dale?
Correct. That's correct.
Right. The way we do it, Derek, is basically, and this is the way we've always done it, is the next check that we get counts towards the next fiscal year. So we've received all we're going to get.
All right. So we receive, in the '20 budget, we account for monies received through the March quarter, and even though through June is in the '20 fiscal budget, it takes effect in July, we received it in July, so it's affected in the next year's budget.
Correct.
That's correct, yeah.
All right. That's a good note. And then, so, yeah, also, I want to just ask about one of the, or a couple of the expense items, and just to understand it a little better. The audit, audit and contracted services, there's an audit that's about $8,000 less. Just what does that mean? Is that the fiscal audit that we do?
Yeah. It's what we originally budgeted, Derek, versus what we actually paid, so that we had a little bit of a surplus.
All right. So that's just a true, regardless, that's really not impacted at all by this.
Right.
And then on the next page, which is still on the general fund budget, there's a section for expenses, supplies, and then within that, equipment, repair, and maintenance, and I just want to get a better understanding of what, what those reductions are.
Which line item is that?
It's on the next page.
Okay.
It's still the, still the general fund budget. So a little bit, so the expense supplies grouping, which is the third grouping, and there's the equipment, repair, and maintenance.
Gasoline tolls, Holly, equipment, repair, and maintenance.
Yeah, got it.
I'm just curious what that is. And the only reason I ask, because it was, when you're talking about equipment, repair, and maintenance, that's, that might be something that we want to consider not deferring, but I'm just curious what that is. that we want to consider not deferring, but I'm just curious what that is.
I'm looking in the accounting software right now, Derek. It's truly equipment, repair and maintenance. It's vehicle maintenance, it's supplies, it's work on some of our vehicles.
Okay, and actually, most of our vehicles are newer, so that's, that's probably not a risk there, so. I was just curious in what, what, what we were deferring there, that's all. Other than that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, and I was just, just going to say that this is based on our actuals of projections. I wouldn't say that we actually really looked at this line item and said we were going to defer this expense. It's not necessary. It definitely, equipment, maintenance, repair, anything related to public works and their activities was given the highest priority.
Right.
So I think this is, this is just related to, we ended, are ending the year with spending less than we had expected.
That's a good point. That's a good note. All right, that's all I have for the general fund. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And before we go to the FY '21 general funds, are there any more questions? If not, we'll go to the FY '21 general fund. Okay, this time we'll go the other way around. Derek, do you have any questions on this particular budget here?
No, not directly. I guess, maybe if you could just explain why, why we expect such a 20% state income tax loss? I mean, just the basis for, for why that's a fifth of, you know, our, our gen, our expected revenue in the initial budget.
So I guess I'll start with that, and then I'll give it over to Dale in case I've missed anything. But basically, the state locate, contacted each of the municipalities, and Dale and I have been following information from the state through the comptroller. They had projected originally that state income tax would be impacted by a 50% decline. And then they came back out and said that was maybe a little aggressive, and it wouldn't be a 50% decline. So this was, our reasoning around this was, I think state income tax has always come in a little higher than the $1 million per our budget. So this was our medium between what the state had originally told us, and I think the state's final projection is closer to this, a 20%, 20 to 30% decline.
Okay, that makes sense. And then I just would note that from, from what you mentioned earlier, Dale, about the highway use nor revenue, the number that's in this budget, I would say, is probably a little bit lower than what we could now expect after your message this weekend.
Yeah, what we got this weekend was 323 is their new estimate.
Right.
Versus the 181, so it's about 142,000.
Right, which is going to make a big difference in this, in this.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
And Derek, I think that comes to like a 9% cut for this current year, 4% for the upcoming year. And this is great news because in initial reports we heard were going to be a 50% cut. So we were elated to hear, and I talked to various mayors in Southern Maryland this morning, and everybody is elated at this good news that we received, so yeah. Okay, Keith?
Thank you. Yeah, I had a similar question about the HURs, so that is good news. The only other item I had a question about were, was the, looks like I have two questions here. The, at the bottom of the page, deputy and residents. What is the impact there? I mean, that looks like it's, what, $178,000 decline?
So that, there is one impact with our police coverage in fiscal year '21. If town council recalls, we had proposed that we would share the cost of a new deputy to split between Chesapeake Beach and North Beach. And we are aware that North Beach is, has not included that in their budget. So considering the COVID impacts, we propose to take that extra deputy out.
Okay, okay. And the thinking being that maybe the year after, to put that back in, or that's just to be decided?
Yes, I think, I think.
Yeah, I may be able to help here. I think the, the sheriff's office decided that they were, they were kind of leaning towards putting training off anyhow, so that this was kind of like a non-issue. Putting off the train, so for the next budget, we would consider that additional deputy.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all the, well, wait a minute, let me scroll to the next page. Recreation operations. What, what, what does that include there? 70 to 30,000?
Right, so recreation operations is all of our, a large cost of that is Kellum's. So we did have some projects in there that were additional projects, such as some repairs to the press box out there on the field, and even some, some work on the ball fields in terms of removing that small baseball area that, that is not used very much. And so that, the decrease there reflects basically general maintenance of the field. So that's keeping the lights on, the field's maintained, minus those extra projects for fiscal year '21.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, good communication with North Beach there. I mean, my only comment would be, I'd be in support of continuing that additional work over Kellum's, removing the, that small ball field there, expanding the practice area over there. That, I'm probably a little disappointed that it hasn't happened already. That gives people more space too, to practice. They can spread out a little more, things like that. Progress in the view of the residents too, that, that's a good thing. I don't have any other questions, though. But good communication with North Beach. Thanks. Can I go?
Go, sir.
Okay, thank you. One question on the income local sources. Item 410160, Bayfront Park admissions. Is that based on a projection of one way, might be able to resume normal activities at Bayfront Park?
This projection did not include any income in this calendar year, so the income there is, is actually for June of next year.
I see. Okay, got it. And then there's a couple items, line items here for miscellaneous expenses. Under other charges, line item 632000, there's a 50% reduction. And there's another one that I can't find right now. But is that just a assumption on our part that we can cut them by that amount? Or is there some specific items that we were envisioning in there, since it's miscellaneous? I can't imagine we had a detail in mind.
Larry, there was a, yeah, I'm sorry. You may recall, this was a couple of months ago there, when we were doing the budget in process, but there was a penalty that the state's going to have to pay that we were going to do a one-time payment of about $2,700 versus paying a few dollars a year. That deadline has been missed, so I basically defaulted to pay in the penalty per year at this time, so that's why it's cut in half. Miscellaneous, unfortunately, there isn't always a perfect line item for every expense. So most of the time, we like to keep at least something in there, but you know, if we don't have the opportunity to, then we just remove it.
No, I, I agree, and I'm glad to hear that there actually is some items that we were envisioning under the miscellaneous items, so we know where we can have some savings, rather than just crossing our fingers and saying, gosh, I hope we can save, you know, $2,000 under the miscellaneous expenses. That's all I have on this one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Charlie?
All right, I have nothing that has not been answered. I, I was curious about the police impact as well, but I have nothing that I would suggest to do differently, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Valerie?
Well, yes. Can we go to total?
Total income? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. So we're, we're expecting, I mean, I know it's all projected. Expecting a potential 13%, 13.8%. My math is right, that's a projected $860,344 in less revenue. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's the difference between the 62 and the 53 number, yes.
Exactly. So at the end of the day, we're expecting about $850,000 less coming in.
Right.
In fiscal '21.
Correct.
I just wanted to get that out there. So that's the projected impact, if you will, on COVID. And then, and if you can't answer, this one is totally okay. But out of all these deferred expenses, some of them were one-time opportunities and they're lost. But other ones will, are deferred in, which of these items do you think, in your opinion, is items that will need to be addressed in 2022? So they're deferred, and not just lost opportunities or lost expenses or what have you, but actually things that we ought to think about in 2022. What's the biggest impact? Is it highway revenue, maybe?
I, I would say a lot of your capital improvement items, a lot of those would be carried over into fiscal, the next fiscal year in the capital improvement list.
Okay, so let's go down to that list. Is that, I mean, you wanted to go down that far, right? I don't want to speed you along faster than you wanted to go.
No.
Get on to the, so I already talked a little bit, like highway user fees and the asphalt, so we'll do as much as we can, like we always do, and move on from there. So I just wanted to, you know, see what the real, y'all's opinion, you're the experts, what the real impact is. And these are the real impacts. Is what you're saying is the capital expenditures.
Right, they would have to, like, likely the majority of what's on this list that we're, that we've taken off, we're going to have to look at next, next fiscal year.
Yeah, some of those are more important than others. I mean, some are really nice to have, and we were looking forward to at least overlook. But if that has to wait two or three years because of this, I think individuals will understand that, you know?
Right.
I don't see anything here that's deferred, that, you know. It's a shame, but it's not tragic. You answered my questions on this, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the next budget, Holly.
Mayor, I'm just realizing, I, did you want to address Councilman Stink's question on admission amusement, how you projected that number for this fiscal year?
Sure, sure. It's at 60% of, and basically, and I think I'm pretty conservative, it's, it's based on zero for July, zero for August, that they're allowed to have a soft opening on September 1. So that would be 30%. That would probably be the capacity for both September and October. And it really don't have them up full and running until November. I think this is a very conservative estimate. I think they're going to be up and running a lot sooner than what I'm, you know, projecting. And we still get us at, you know, 60% of a pretty good number. So I'm very confident we'll get to that number probably higher.
I, yeah, again, a month ago, I would have thought that number would have been zero. I think it's good to go conservative if things continue on a, on a positive track with the, with the way things have been opening so far. I think it's reasonable to think we're going to meet or exceed that. It's not the biggest number in the budget anyway, and I think the amusement number, you know, is, is, is going to be substantial too. So yeah, I think it's, that's, that's good conservative math.
All right, great.
Other savings, Pat? Is the N-100 dragon boat for 2021? It's already, I've already raised the funds for it, so it's all paid. 2,000 back into the, we don't need it for 2021.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next budget, Holly?
Okay, so this is the utility fund fiscal year '20.
Okay, we'll start with Valerie.
When it comes to the utility fund, you think what, I mean, what is the decrease in the sewer and waterfront? Is it because like beach elementary's not open? Or what is, what does it change? The nature of that change? Or the expected change?
For, I'm sorry, Valerie, was that for the water usage?
Yeah, for water usage, sewer usage, is it?
Yeah, I would say for the water usage, and again, just to remind everyone, we're talking about fiscal year '20, and when we're saying projected actuals, these are pretty close to where we are today, or you know, some of these numbers may go a little higher. So whether we're talking about water usage or sewer usage, I just believe we overplanned. We were a little higher on the budget than we should have. For example, you can see if you go up the sewer usage charge, we're at 643, last year we came in at 649. The water, we came in at 252. So the numbers are actually very similar to the prior fiscal year.
And what is your expectation on taps, on capital connection? Any?
The expectation for fiscal year '21?
Right, we're in.
We had, we had none in fiscal year '20, I guess, is what I would say. '21, I'm trying to remember.
We have a heritage in '21.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember the dollar amount, yeah.
I think that's in the next budget.
It's next slide, yeah.
FY '20.
Okay, and one would have, I really don't have any questions to answer. So I think it's, Holly can go.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. I, I observe here something similar, I think, which is that you guys have, have been very conservative in your projections. So when you look at these actuals, it's helpful then to understand why, it seems, tell me if I'm understanding this right, why we're able to withstand some impacts that we see in the 2021 budget, because you guys have, have been conservative in estimating these numbers, which is good. Am I understanding that right?
Actually, you guys get the credit.
Yeah.
So you're right, you know, the council and staff has traditionally been very, you know, prudent. And as I said, when I opened up, it certainly pays off during a crisis like this.
Yeah.
So yes, Charlie, you're correct.
Hey, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Larry?
Question of interest, I guess, that applies to both the utility fund and later on, when we talk about the WRTP. Just what, what are we experiencing in the way of flows? I mean, I could argue flows should be up because a whole lot more people are spending time at home, but I could also argue that flows should be down because we don't see as many people coming to visit the town. I'm just curious what the impact has been of this virus.
John, did you want to?
Yeah.
John or Jay?
I, I can speak to, this actually came up earlier, and it, and it was kind of a curious thing to look at, because I don't know if we'll ever experience this again in our lifetimes, businesses being closed and residents being home. So as far as production of water from the water towers, it's been pretty much exactly the same. Not showing a, less production or more production as this time last year. Now, that can be seasonal, if it's a wet month versus a dry month, but basically, I'm not seeing any difference in the water we're producing. And John, you can speak as far as the water we're treating.
Right, well, I tell you, May started out a little bit higher. We were averaging like just about under a million gallons a day. But in June, so far.
It was a wet month.
Right, lot of rain. So in June, we've come down to about 830,000 coming in. So we're starting to decline as it gets hotter and drought and less rain, but.
Thank you. That's all I have. Okay, Greg?
No questions. Thank you.
Keith?
No questions, thanks.
Eric?
No, same. I really just wanted to understand the expenses, and they all kind of make sense, so I don't have any, any questions on this one.
Right, okay, let's go to FY '21. I'll start with Derek.
So, I mean, I kind of looked through this. I don't really see a lot of difference, other, other than the opening balance.
Yeah, other than, from an expense item. Holly, do you want to touch on the engineering?
Yes, sorry, I had some issues getting this blown up. So, uh, there is a change in engineering that, that we just plugged in here, just for the town council to be aware of. We are looking at bringing the Highlands online through the town. So that is the, the engineering estimate to get us to the grant period application in January of 2021 is $100,000 if we move forward that project. So we, we want, we would recommend adding that in to the budget.
So my only other question is, the water tower in Ridgefield Station is still in the budget?
Correct, it's in that item with 435,000.
Right, so if we got to a point in the next, well, the rest of this year, in the next fiscal year, the first part of the next fiscal year, if we experienced an issue in this budget, which it doesn't appear we would, but if we did, and I guess I'm asking probably Jay this question, could we put that off one more year in an, in an emergency?
It, it could be put off a year in emergency. But, but keep in mind, it will cost more the longer it's put off. We were trying to get that tower painted actually before the state highway bridge. And then it was, the, the bridge period took so long that we were isolated from the tower, we couldn't do it. So now that we're back online, I would like to get it done. But yes, in a dire emergency, it could go another year.
Right, so I.
You want to get it done.
Right, no, I think the point is, is if we experienced an issue in this budget and we didn't necessarily want to go to the reserves. I mean, there is an option for a significant chunk of money that we could tap into within the budget, realizing that it may cost more in the long run. That's a fair statement?
That's fair. But at this time, we are moving forward. I just had the latest survey done, and, and we're going to come back with some numbers I think that are going to be a little bit less than what we projected. So as of now, I'm, I'm planning on moving forward and getting an RFP out to get this thing painted.
That would be my suggestion, too. I was just, just wanted to point that out. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Keith?
Yeah, no questions on this budget, thank you.
Okay, Greg?
Certainly a lot to keep, certainly a lot to keep track of. There's a lot to consider for forward thinking. I just think y'all are hitting things here. This is a good discussion. I don't have any questions about the sheet, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Larry?
Yeah, my question had to do with the engineering professional fees, and that's been answered, thank you.
Very well. Charlie?
I have a broad question that really struck me the first time I saw this. And tell me if this is just my own little bit of inexperience. But all of these numbers that are flat, how is that possible? Is that just the adjustments that you've made? Because it seems to me that just general cost of, not cost of living, but, you know, cost of doing business ought to be up a couple percentage points. And all of these numbers are, are flat. Is that normal?
So Charlie, when we looked at it, we were comparing it to the fiscal year budget. And the thought process was basically, we started from an expense perspective, that we didn't think, or at the time that we put this together, and I still believe this to be the case, that there wouldn't be any changes or any areas or opportunities for us to make cuts, if you will. So the position we're really taking on this at this point in time for fiscal year '21 is we don't see any opportunity to make any expense cuts, or we don't see any opportunity, or I should say, concerns about any revenue declining.
Okay, I guess I'm not asking about cuts. I'm asking why, why numbers would be flat as opposed to, let's say, under normal times, 2% higher or 3% higher for, for, you know, things that just escalating cost?
But they're not flat. We're looking at the FY '21 budget that we approved a month ago versus changes that we might need to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, I understand, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Valerie?
Oh, I have no questions on that, thank you. It's all been answered.
Okay, let's go to the next budget, then.
Okay. So this is the Water Park Fiscal Year '20 Fund.
Yeah, and before I'm getting taken on questions, which I'm going to start with Valerie. Yeah, I, you know, kind of like what, you know, Charlie hit on, on earlier. It's, it's amazing how fluid the whole situation is. I personally am very confident that the, you know, the governor's going to give us the go-ahead to, to open up the water park, you know, sometime in June. I think he's going to give us the word. And we're prepared and anxious to open the, the water park ASAP, quite frankly. So I just wanted to, you know, share that with, with the council because I am in touch with the, I, I have a weekly meeting with his cabinet, and we kind of know in advance what's going on, or they give us little hints now and then. So yeah, I'm feeling pretty good about, about the water park, and that's it. So I'll begin with Valerie.
Okay, Pat, just with what you were just talking about, um, what is the earliest date? Would it be July 15th or July 1st or any time?
I, I think you're asking, what do I actually think? You know, I think that a July 15th date is very prudent. You know, crossing, you know, crossing our fingers. It would be nice if we get the word even earlier because I think we need about 10 days to get going. So while we're, while we're looking at July 15th, I'm hoping it'll be earlier.
That would have been my next question, how long it takes to prepare. And you said about 10 days, and that's, that's great.
Right, 10 days.
And without, I mean, it's still fluid. Do you have expectation that maybe a soft opening with a limited capacity? Or?
Yeah, no, I, I believe for, I can pretty much bet on that. I think what's going to happen is, is I'm going to bet on a 30% capacity, maybe 25. But I think we're going to get the, to go ahead to open, but it'll be at 30. And it may very well stay 30 all summer, I'm not sure. But that's how I think it's going to open up. And that's kind of what we're planning on, 30%. So.
Do these numbers reflect that, 30% capacity?
Yes, that's what I just said, I think.
I just wanted to make sure I, I got it.
Yeah.
All right, um, so going to the water park budget itself. Did you correct, Dale, that there's $781,232 in reserves?
Uh, that number sounds correct, yes.
That's, that's really good news.
Yeah, it is, greatness.
I think that'll help with mitigating the loss of revenue from the month of June for the water park hopefully. And then possibly pushing some of the blow from a 30% reduction in capacity. And it takes about 10 days to open. So will we have any problems, do you think? I mean, we're ready to open when given the word. Is there anything that would stop that, that you need to report to council court?
I think mainly just gearing up our staff and, and getting the pool operations up and running. As the mayor said, it would take about 10 days. But I think we're, we're using July 15th as, as kind of our, our base of a starting point.
Okay, and these, these numbers reflect?
So this is fiscal year '20.
Yeah, this is fiscal year '20.
Budget here. We're going to go to '21 next.
I'm good, then.
Okay, very good. Charlie?
No, I have nothing on the, on the 2020 budget.
Okay, Larry? Okay, then. You're with us, Larry?
Are you on mute?
I'm off now.
Okay.
No, I had no specific questions, other than appreciating that the discussion of the water park fund is a fluid situation.
Thank you. Greg?
Uh, no questions, thank you.
Keith?
No, no questions on this, thank you.
Okay, and Derek?
Yeah, just a general question. So looking at actuals, revenue is about 978,000, expenses about just over a million. So it's about a 58K difference. So is it, is it correct to say that, that 58K is being absorbed by the reserves completely? The water park reserves?
No, we, we decreased expenses. So we, we do not have any impact to reserves in fiscal year '20 for the water park.
So it looks like the subtotal for expenses is a million, which is, is more than the revenue. So that's where I'm... Even with the reduction, it looks like it's still greater than. Am I reading this right?
Yep, you are.
So Derek, is your question, are you thinking this is revenue we've received? This is expenses we've paid? So that difference, where's that money coming from?
Yes.
Okay. So what we have is, we have two things. We have a budget and cash flow. And with the budget, you know, obviously, at the end of the year, we're going to finish with a surplus or a deficit. With cash flow, you have things like accruals, things that come in and out, prepaid. And so there isn't a true one-for-one correlation. So to answer your question directly, it would show as a deficit if the numbers were all exact on what we projected of about 58,000. And last year, we ran about 100,000 deficit. But those funds don't actually, we don't go and then take it from reserves, if that makes any sense.
Okay, yeah, I'm really only looking at the projected actuals column. I'm not, I'm not looking at the budget column at all. So that's, that was the basis of my question. Because it looks like on here that we're about 58K. We've, we're going, expenditures will be 58K more than revenue.
Exactly, from a budget, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, let's go to FY '21 then.
Starting with me again?
Yep.
So really, my question here is, and it was in the summary as well, as far as the opening balance with a July 15th open, August 1st open, and a closure for full year. Can you explain a little more detail of what the changes in those numbers are? So for instance, with a $261,000 opening balance for the July 15th versus 100,000. So layman, it looks to me like there's about $1,658,000 expenditure in those two weeks, if, if the, if the opening is pushed two weeks. So can you just kind of explain those three numbers?
Yeah, Derek, it makes a, it, it's a really good question. This is a little challenge. And because we're doing a couple of things here. We're trying to look at budgets as well as cash flow. But from a cash flow perspective, it is really hard to project where we're going to be from a cash flow, based on some of the things I just mentioned from your previous question, with other transactions that happen out of cash. What I would say is, this is directionally correct. But could these numbers change a little bit from a cash flow? But it was basically a best guess at that point in time, what we thought our cash flow would be.
Okay. But, I mean, if we, we opened on July 15th, we're pretty confident we would have a positive opening balance in the tune of 250K. Is that a, I mean, that's what you're saying?
Right, right.
Enclosure for the full year guarantees a, a negative?
Right, and we would be dipping into the reserve, correct?
Right, okay. All right, that's my question, thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Keith?
I appreciate the clarification on this table. I bet I have no additional questions, thank you.
Okey-dokey. Greg?
Um, the water park opens up at some point this season. Presume, or hypothetically, we'll go with 30%. 30% capacity doesn't mean 30% operating costs. The lower capacities, it's more expensive to run the water park with the lower capacity, is that right?
There are some positions that we could scale back on. But obviously, you have your main positions, like your lifeguards, that you have to have a certain number regardless of your number. So there, there would be some savings at, at a lower capacity.
Uh, and I, in the, in our consideration for reopening, and I'm presuming we will at some point this season, with the limited capacities, I could see us hitting that max capacity many, many days. And the, the revenue for out of county or even out of town folks or users, it's higher than the money you're going to get from in-town users. I would still like to see there be consideration towards, uh, not a preference, that's the wrong word, but a, a stronger inclusion for Twin Beach residents. You know, under, under the, the 30% capacity. Because again, we can hit that every day. And, and even though we may lose a little more emphasizing local resident use, I'm fine with that. Just kind of a, an observation's really there. It's going to be what it's going to be. And I'm happy that it's going to be open. We all want to be safe. That, that was really my only thoughts on this. Thanks, right now.
Thank you, sir. Larry?
My questions were the same as Councilman Ferraz on the opening balance. I have nothing further.
Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, I have, I have a broad budget question, and then I have a specific operating question. My budget question is this. Have we considered the possibility that we ramp up and we open in July, as we're all hoping? And then we have to, we have to take a step back because of a second wave or some such? Is there a, is there a thought given to a plan of what we do in that case? And one thing that leaps to mind is if we, if, if people actually step up and buy in an annual pass, do we actually face the risk of having to refund them? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think Holly can answer the, the annual pass question.
Right, we, we've been speaking with Marilyn regarding that concern. So we would, we would err on the side of refunding individuals if they do not get a full, full year. So we definitely have been considering all of those, those points, and they're good points.
Okay, okay. I have a, a thought about, and I'm not sure if it's even appropriate to bring up in a budget discussion, but to what, really what Greg asked, I would love to see us be able to give the opportunity for local residents to make use of. I'm even thinking more Brownies Beach than the water park. That might just reflect my own personal choice of where I would, would spend more time. So if there's a way that we can, we can sell annual passes, well, of course, we don't need to... If there's a way we can provide the ability for people to, to be local and make use of these facilities, I would love to figure out a way to do that. And, and maybe that's something we can all brainstorm about and have a, have a conversation about in another work session, I don't know. I wish I had better, something better to offer than just that sort of grand question, but I put it out there.
Okay. Valerie?
Uh, yeah, thanks. The first thing I'll say is, I thought the survey that was provided was a great idea to gauge what the water park needs to do to make customers, users feel comfortable. That was a wonderful idea. Whoever came up with that, kudos to you. Next, I really like what Greg said about consideration for town residents, especially if there's limited capacity. I think that would be most... They deserve it, for everything, everyone deserves it. Being as needed, they can get in. I was wondering if, with the season passes, are they going to be at a reduced cost since there are reduced days that they can use it?
We're still reviewing that. I think that, a lot of that depends on when we end up opening.
Yeah, so I didn't have anything on the actual budget. I mean, it is what it is, and it's such a fluid... Yeah, so I didn't have anything on the actual budget. I mean, it is what it is, and it's such a fluid projection. You could have a 30% open and a 25% opening, 50% opening, the dates are different. I look forward to the water park opening this year as soon as possible. At whatever capacity is required to have that, have residents and guests be safe. And like I said, I'll reiterate, I thought the survey was a great idea. Hopefully some good ideas will come out of that. So our customers can feel comfortable and safe. 30% or any sort of capacity limitations, we got to really consider residents first. And then what happens? Look forward to good news as soon as possible on this front. That's it.
I share your.
And I will thank, thank Marilyn for the survey. She put that together with some marketing staff. And they've received some great responses on social media, if you've seen any of that. But people are really excited about the water park, and I think that's great.
Yes, they are. And I thought there were also some good ideas that came through. You know, folks had good ideas about what can be done to keep folks safe. And so I think it's wonderful that we're asking them what their ideas are. So it's a really cool idea, and I like it. And that's really all I had. Go water park.
And, and once I, if I glean anything from my meetings with the cabinet secretaries, I'll, I'll, I'll let you guys know if we get any good word early in advance. I'm, I'm as excited as everybody else is about getting this water park going.
Thanks, Pat.
You're welcome. Do we have another slide, Holly?
Yes. Very little.
Yeah.
Impact, but let me see if I can get this blown up.
Derek, or no, Valerie, we'll start with you. Any questions on the, on this budget?
This is fiscal year 20.
Fiscal year 20?
No, not for fiscal year 20.
Okay, Charlie?
No.
Larry?
Yes, this applies somewhat to the FY 20 and also the 21 budget. I was just curious, I know we've been having some discussions, has there been any resolution of the variable fees issues with our user jurisdictions?
I'd say we're, we're still working through that, still working towards our own flow meter as well. So it's still in progress.
Okay, it's just, obviously that has a significant impact on these budgets since the user jurisdictions are about half of the flows. Thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, Greg?
Good point, Larry. No, I don't have any, any questions about this. Thank you.
Okay, Keith?
No questions about this.
And Derek?
None on the 20.
Okay, so now we'll, we'll go to the, the 21. And Derek?
Yeah, so I see that the filters are here, which I was happy to see. They're still in the budget. I guess my concern is, and this is more maybe a general observation, but of all of our budgets, it seems to be the one where there's things that come up through the year, you know, maintenance or otherwise that, you know, need to be, you know, John needs to work within his budget and all that. But I guess it concerns me that this budget only has $1,000 in reserve. And if we have a thin, relatively thin budget already, and there are very few capital projects in here with a very small reserve. I mean, is there any concern amongst the group that we may be putting ourselves out a little bit, walking out on a limb a little bit in this budget, or no?
Well, we'll let them answer that when it's their turn.
Well, I was, I was referring to John, Holly, and Dale.
Well, I think, I think in terms of a reserve, it is something that we have discussed. In our interjurisdictional agreement, there is a provision there that states that we should have an operating and maintenance reserve fund that's funded by all partners and held by the town. That's been something that's, that's never been initiated in the entire time that we can tell of this interjurisdictional agreement. So I think if there were to be a reserve fund, it would start there.
Okay, so maybe for John, I mean, you know, with your experience there and the, you know, the number of things that come up, you know, through the year, I mean, is this, I mean, I know, obviously we have opportunities to help out, but within your budget and within the environment that we're living, and you mentioned, you know, before that you're, you're, you're having to clean, you know, the equipment more because, well, probably the fact that more people are using this sewer system, putting more into the sewer system, that is, is causing you more work and thus more costs. Is there any maintenance issues or degradation of equipment or anything like that that, you know, higher usage this year may project to next year? I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for, you know, the fact that we're, it's, budget's pretty thin already as far as, you know, what's going into it, and there's no reserves. So I'm just trying to understand that.
Well, I think this is, this, this capital projects on the budget, I think you'll probably start to see next year's budget changing to what you're talking about in different projects that might have to be looked at if we can't get it in budget 2021. We had some projects that we were looking into, but then we got hit with the virus. So I'm going to look into the budget to do some of the projects that we wanted to get finished in this, in the 2020. But continuing on, there are projects that are coming up for maintenance that you'll, you'll see a different budget and projections and things for next years. And that will be addressing a lot of the, the problems that we are going through right now.
So it seems that that reserve, reserve fund issue is something that probably should look into then?
Yeah, it'd be nice if, if we could get the partners to actually even start to put in to build that reserve fund.
Which is a challenge, not.
And this, these times, it's a challenge, just to.
Right. Let alone right now. So, no, that's understood. But okay, thank you. That's, that's my only question on this one.
Comment, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. It was just related to Holly, related to your comment early regarding COVID grants. Theoretically, I mean, it seems you couldn't quantify it, but there are COVID-related equip, there's COVID-related equipment degradation, subsequent required additional maintenance because toilet paper shortages. I mean, there's still toilet paper shortages. People are, it's forcing people to flush, you know, more of, of the stuff that they shouldn't be flushing. I don't know if that's an A or you can use to try to scoop up some additional funds or not through the grants. That was it. Thank you.
Okay.
Definitely look into it.
Back to Keith.
Yes, definitely.
Great point, Greg. I was gonna make a similar suggestion that perhaps there was some way to capitalize on getting some funding for that. But, and, and I agree with you, Derek, as well, that that's something to look into, this, a reserve fund. Other than that, I don't have any comments on this one. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to Greg.
No questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Then Larry?
Just building on what I pointed out before, the resolution of discussions with the user jurisdictions on the variable income is sort of key in this budget and going forward. And then the other thing I'll just mention is under the capital projects, we have an item there for structure and engineering of the filter enclosures. That's the issue that came up during an MBE inspection. And my understanding is we are, this budget, the $250,000 is really for the engineering of this, the capital cost of the construction will hopefully be in FY 22, no later than that. And hopefully we come up with a scheme to accomplish protecting those filters in a cheaper manner than, cheaper's not the right word, less expensive manner than what we had originally envisioned. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. So, okay, Charlie?
I just couldn't help but cringe when Greg said scoop up some funding.
Sorry.
My only question, and this is one of, just because I'm a bit of a newbie, is, is there any fear, concern that the partners cut or don't pay their share, or is that, are they bound that's not an issue?
The good news is they're current. I will say for the record, this is the first time since I've been on board, everyone's current. I mean, literally, nothing's out there outstanding. So cautiously optimistic. Before my time, we did have one partner that got way behind and got them caught up when I came on board. So I, I think we're okay. I, I do a lot of follow-up.
Thank you.
Good, okay. And Valerie?
Oh, I have no questions on this. Thanks. Have all been answered and addressed.
Okay, do we have any more slides, Holly?
That's it.
That's wonderful. Well, I really do applaud the work that, the work out, that was done to go into this. It's, it was really good work, Holly and Dale. I appreciate it. And I'd like to start with Derek in the council lightning round.
Yeah, no, that's what I was going to say too. I mean, the time that went into this, preparing this, really appreciate that. Certainly money well spent in those hours. And, you know, and ask for updates as they become available, which I know you will. So I appreciate, you know, what you've done here and, and, you know, as things, because this is a very, again, fluid situation. So in many cases, as, as, as we learn more and are able to take part in those important decisions, I appreciate the opportunity.
Keith?
Yeah, thank you. A couple items I just wanted to mention. One was, I don't, I don't know how many folks know, there was a concern by some residents raised about what they thought to be Roundup being sprayed on, on the weeds along the Bayfront Board, Boardwalk, Bayfront Park Boardwalk, excuse me. And I just want to thank the mayor for jumping on that and taking care of that. And I wanted to amplify a suggestion from Frank White, and also just kind of find out what the town does do with regard to material safety issues. He had kind of, he had recommended that we make those available to the public whenever a contractor is using a chem, dangerous chemicals in the town. And so if not tonight, I was just hoping that we could get a report out on, on that at a future time at another session.
We can get you an update on that, Keith.
All right, thank you. And the other item I wanted to just bring up was, of course, we're all familiar with the protests that are going on right now for Black Lives Matter and George Floyd and Justice for All. And I just wanted to suggest perhaps that the town organize or perhaps communicate with Sheriff Evans and/or Lieutenant Naughton and see if there was something that, that we could do. I think they do a great job. You know, I reached out to them when I started hearing about some of these protests going on about whether they use body cameras here in, in Calvert County. And, and Lieutenant Naughton confirmed that they, they did, and they have for about two years now. So that was great news. And I'm, you know, I think people would be interested to know from them, you know, some of these items, just what they do do to, to, to help mitigate or solve, excuse me, I gotta shut a door here. These problems before they happen. For example, what, what are their hiring and community policing practices that they use? Do they, do they do implicit bias training? As I said, that we already know they use body cams, and what, what other things that they might be wanting to share with us? And, and perhaps improve the conversation that's going on between residents and the sheriff's office. We already have the National Night Out, which is, you know, to help folks get to know their first responders better in the community. That's certainly something we could maybe participate more strongly in to help encourage those conversations and, and, you know, head off, continue to head off any problems that could related to this. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. And thank you all for a great job with the budget stuff.
Thank you, sir. Greg?
Yeah, a couple things. One's just a general comment. Just going back to what John mentioned, all the trouble that focus issues he's been having with stuff being flushed that people shouldn't be flushing. You're always going to have that. But I think it would behoove the town to try to consider getting some language in wherever they can, just as a constant message, you know, far beyond COVID. If it was a problem before this, it'll be a problem afterwards. Just like a note, maybe on the water bill, the town blast, the website, you know, about what people should be, the only things people should be putting in their toilets and keeping it, keeping it as a simple message, a constant message there. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, I, I know we've been engaged with State Highway regarding the light there at Richfield Station. It's getting ready to go online. However, I know that we need to have State Highway address this median issue there at the octagon. It's a safety matter. There have been several accidents there over the past couple of years alone. And I know the mayor's been thinking about it, you all have been thinking about it. I'd like to, it shouldn't cost us anything. I know we approved and signed off on the original design, but things need to get tweaked sometimes. And I would like to see that get on State Highway's radar some point this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of respond to Greg's comment about the flushables and its impact. I know Holly has been posting stuff on the town website. Basically, the message that is being sent out, not just to our residents, but to everybody is, you only flush the three P's. Heat, poop, and paper. That's it. And that's the message that's being sent. In a general note, I just wanted to send a huge thank you to the mayor, Dale, Holly, and the entire town staff for the effort on updating these budgets. It's just incredible what you all have done. Thank you very much, and for your dedicated service during this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words, Larry. Charlie?
Yeah, echoing the thanks. You know, I'm actually doing this in my professional life, parsing through these budgets and trying to guess and make, make plans about projections and figuring out where to cut. And it's really, really not as much fun as doing the opposite. And so I really appreciate the effort that you guys have done. The one comment I have is I happened to notice a number of posts on Nextdoor. I don't know if anyone spends any time on Nextdoor. Raising in frank, in some cases of just an out and out ignorant way, questions about what was going on at Bayfront Park. That people are out, oh, you're supposed to go, and I don't need to go into the detail on that other than to say, I'm wondering if there's a way in our communication, we can also reach out to folks on Nextdoor. Maybe do a blast on Nextdoor to tell people to sign up for the regular communications so that they are better informed. I'd be happy to help with that. So I put that out there, Holly, if you want to talk about that offline or whatever. It just seems like I happen to notice a lot of really stupid conversations going on by, by people who weren't as informed as they could be. And, and so that's, that's not, that's not productive for anyone. Along those lines, I'll wrap up by saying I really appreciate how we've moved forward slowly but surely in getting, getting things open and available to residents. So thank you for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Charlie. Valerie?
Oh, yeah. I'd also like to add my thanks to Holly and Dale and the complete staff who have done a great job with identifying potential impacts. And the fact that we do not have to dip into the rainy day fund or hope not to is very promising, as is the maintaining the ability to pay off our debt early. So if we can do those two things, not dip into the rainy day fund and pay off our debt early, I think that's a really good start and. early, I think that's a really good start, and everyone at town halls to be congratulated. That was a lot of work that went into these numbers, you made it extremely understandable. Also, it's nice to have the railway trail open again, and look forward to a safe water park opening when possible, and I, once again, like to reiterate that I thought the survey was a great idea. And I continue to take care, practice social distancing, and I look forward to one day being with you all in person once more. I miss you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the ayes have it, have a good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
There you go.
Hey, we could almost go to Trader's for a beer.